Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 12th, 2019, meeting of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals. I will call the meeting to order. And at this point, as we customarily do, if there is anyone in the room who is recording the meeting, either via video or audio means, if you would please raise your hands at this point. And let the record show that no one raised their hands. We are being broadcast on WACA local cable access this evening. And we have three matters on our agenda, two public hearings, actually, three public hearings, and then some administrative matters at the end. Let's start off with item number one on the agenda. Case number SP 4-19, 229 East Union Street. The applicant is Paul F. Barbieri. I will read the public notice that was published in the Metro West Daily News in accordance with the statute. The petitioner is requesting a special permit from frontage requirements per Chapter 40A, Section 6 of the Massachusetts zoning act, and Chapter 282, Sections 4.1 and 9.3 of the Ashland zoning bylaws, in order to demolish the pre-existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling on the pre-existing non-conforming lot. The way we will proceed this evening is we'll have a presentation by the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. There will be questions by members of the board. We will open the matter for any public comment from any members of the public who wish to come forward and be heard. And then I would anticipate that we will, as a board, discuss the matter after that. And that being said, I see we have somebody here at the podium, so if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself, name and address, and we'll turn the matter over to you.
Thank you. My name is Peter Hiranis. I'm the attorney for the petitioner. I practice out of Framingham, 439 Worcester Road. I'll keep it brief. Essentially, the frontage requirement is 150 feet. My clients have 149.06 feet. So what they are requesting is relief from that portion of the bylaw. And we note that the potential, the proposed structure will be in greater compliance than the existing one in terms of the other sections of the bylaw setbacks and so forth. The proposed structure would probably be more in line with the neighborhood as it is now, and I don't believe there's any neighbors in opposition to it from my clients.
Have you heard anything from neighbors with respect to the application?
I believe only some support for it or just no issues with it. I don't believe anyone from the neighborhoods here has written any letters that I'm aware of. And again, it's less than a foot, so it wouldn't look much different.
Anything else you wish to present at this time?
That'd be basically it. If you look at the rest of the street, they're all within about the same size. Some are smaller with less frontage now. This would be just about the, you know, 149 is about a foot less than 150, obviously, so they'd be, have as much frontage as anyone else there, so.
Any questions from members of the board? Brian?
No, I'm good.
Stu?
No.
Questions? You're requesting a special permit because of the non-conforming frontage, which is minimal. Do you also need a special permit for the demolition of the existing structure and building a structure that is larger in size and not on the same footprint as the existing one?
They've, yeah, my client said that they have applied for the demo permit already, and I believe the proposed structure is in compliance with the rest of the bylaw.
Okay.
So they're not seeking any other special relief, other than the frontage.
Any other questions? With respect to the home that's being, going to be constructed, in the documentation that we've been given, we've got something that's been marked in plans as Set Number Two, and it seems to be a mirror image of the original plans that were set. And it shows the garage on the left side as opposed to the right side. So the home, if everything is granted that you're seeking, the home is going to be built in accordance with the Set Two structure?
I labeled them Set One and Two, but...
I'm sorry. I didn't...
The garage is going to be on the left-hand side of the house as you're looking at it.
Okay, that's the, that's what's...
On the right-hand side, there's a piece that goes out in the back where the deck is.
Yep.
Well, it protects the deck. That way, there, the people next to it on that side of the house, you know, the people on that side, wouldn't, they'd have more privacy from the people on that side.
That's right. I'm sorry to have confused. I didn't realize that you were unaware that we had internally, I guess, marked it as Set, the Set of Plans as Set Two.
Well, Amanda was a great help.
Okay. And the house that's going to be built is going to meet all the requirements as far as front, side, and rear setbacks?
It has plenty of, it meets all the requirements. It's got way more than 30,000 square feet. The only problem is that half a foot, or 11 inches.
Okay, yeah.
You know? So, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. No, that's fine, thank you. I mean, we've had a number of special permit requests come before us in the years I've been on the board, seeking relief from the 150-foot frontage, but I can't recall one that is anywhere as close to 150 feet as this one is. Okay. Amanda, have, did the planning officer, the CBA, receive any correspondence from any neighbors or butters or anyone with respect to this?
No.
Is there anyone present in the room this evening that would like to be heard on the special permit request for 229 East Union Street? The room is silent, and no one is stepping up to the podium. So, that being said, our usual process is we don't close the hearing while we enter into some preliminary discussion as a board, so that if there are any questions that we have, we can address the applicant. And we also generally do not take a final vote this evening. What we will do is to instruct the assistant town planner to draft a decision in accordance with the instructions and guidelines we give her tonight. And at our next meeting, we will vote to approve and sign the decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I do have one question that just arose because I looked at this diagram here. It said that there's a shed to be demolished, and there's a picture of a shed on this plan. Are you going to build another shed?
No, we're just going to take that down. All the, the only structure that's going to be on this, on this land when we're done is going to be that house. You know, there's...
So this, this shed, this picture of a shed here or this diagram...
Right, in the back of the property. That used to be a chicken coop when I was a kid. And, you know, it's quite old, and it's actually fallen down on itself, so, you know...
On the plan, there is a second shed?
Right behind the house. There's a, there's a small one, maybe 10 by 10.
Yeah.
That also is coming down.
Okay.
The only thing on the lot is going to be the house.
Very good.
No other structures at all.
So two sheds are coming down?
Coming down, okay.
Is that what you just said?
Well, one, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
One's already down, we just got to take it away.
Oh, okay.
Last one, it's all.
Thank you. Well, why don't we enter into some discussion on this? Sitting on the hearing will be the three full members, Brian Forsthal, Stuart Segal, and myself, John Trefeathen. And that being said, the relief that they're seeking is a special permit to have less than the 150-foot frontage. And it's still unclear to me under Section 40A, Section 6, if we have to also grant a special permit for the demolition of the house, or we do not, because the existing house is not a non-conforming structure.
Right. I think it's covered under...
It's covered under that, okay. That's fine. Then, I think I'm clear on that. That being said, discussion thoughts? And Rob, you can participate in this as well, even though ultimately you don't get to vote when we do vote, finally, next up at our next meeting. Seems, that seems rather cut and dried, frankly.
Right. The addition of the new proposed structure would certainly improve the neighborhood, and I would be inclined to grant the variance.
It's a special permit request. Yeah. I would, I would as well, and Brian is. Now, as far as any conditions, I know we have certain conditions that we place in all of our special permit decisions. I assume those would be included in the draft decision, and also that the construction would proceed, I guess, in accordance with the, however you want to refer to the plans that we had referred to as Set...
Set Two. That matches the foundation on the lot plan.
Correct, exactly. Okay, is there anything else that we need to decide on this? Applicant satisfied with that when the decision is ultimately finalized?
That should be fine. Thank you.
Let's discuss when we're going to have the draft decision ready and hopefully signed on the, our next meeting. The next scheduled meeting would typically be the fourth Tuesday of the month, which is March 26th. Able to be present?
Yes.
It'll be a quick meeting. Okay. Good, then, that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to continue this matter to Tuesday, March 26th at 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Sir, a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Vote carries forward or nothing.
Thank you.
We'll be back on the 26th to finalize the decision. You're welcome to come back on that date, or you don't need to, it's up to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've had confusion in his reading.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Should have been over there for the...
Yeah.
I didn't mean to.
No, I need to stand, no, I, yeah, I just sort of...
When I read this, I saw the word variance, I said variance, and the X should have been here for variance.
Yeah, I need to clean it up.
Yeah, it would be better to put that variance down.
This is, this was Josh's application, so I want to kind of clean it up and move it, check boxes, so there's less confusion.
Right.
I thought everybody was here for the, the second hearing, not for this.
Me, too.
Moving on to our second scheduled hearing, which is a request for a special permit for 400 Cedar Street. Is there anyone here on that matter? Somebody is raising their hand. Two people are raising their hands, okay. Now, someone who I believe will probably participate in the public comments section.
Got it. Okay.
Let me, let me just read for the record. This is item number two on our agenda. Case SP 5-19, 400 Cedar Street, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, DVA AT&amp;T. The petitioners, I will read the public notice, which has been published in the Metro West Daily News in accordance with the statute. The petitioners are requesting a special permit under Chapter 282, Sections 3.3.2, 3.3.3, 6.4, and 9.3 of the Ashland zoning bylaws, in order to extend a pre-existing non-conforming use by installing three antennas for new network service upgrade with associated antenna and electronic equipment, fiber, and coax conduits, and install additional equipment inside the existing fenced area at the base of the town-owned Cedar Street water tower. As I stated at the last minute, at the last hearing, we will start with the applicant stating its position, take questions from members of the board, and then open the matter up for public comment, and then enter into discussion. We will not finalize the decision tonight, but it would be anticipated that we will direct the assistant town planner to draft a hearing decision in accordance with our instructions this evening. That being said, if you'd be kind enough to identify yourself, name and address for the record, and we will then turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Timothy Green with Terror Search, representing AT&amp;T, 157 Riverside Drive, Norwell, Massachusetts. AT&amp;T is an existing tenant on the water tank, has been up there for close to 20 years now, and as part of regular network upgrades comes before you at various points over the years to add equipment, remove equipment, modify equipment, replace equipment. AT&amp;T is in front of you tonight, in order to add three antennas and associated equipment to the existing array, in order to provide additional, better coverage and capacity, as well as network enhancements to the surrounding area of 400 Cedar Street. The location of the antennas fundamentally stays the same. They rotate around a little bit, but stayed to the same location. The town engineer has approved the drawings and has approved the design. The water department is on board with it also. It's part of our, we have a long-term lease with the town. I believe our lease goes until 2045. And, now, that's really about it. I guess I could keep talking and talking about the site, but I want to take questions from you or anybody else.
Sure.
Can I just make a few clarifications? So the, the water tank is owned by the town. As part of the application, the applicant did get a letter from DPW, who is the authorizing party, saying, go ahead and proceed with the zoning process. And, yeah, so that's included in your packet. I just wanted to clarify, it's a town-owned water tank, but it has multiple wireless communications on it.
And just for purposes of, I know all of us on the board are aware of this because we dealt with a special permit request last year from...
Yep.
...a different cellular phone company, but for purposes of the public's knowledge, we were advised by town council at last year's matter that the request is governed by a federal statute, commonly referred to as the Spectrum Act. And the Spectrum Act provides in pertinent part that a state or local government, in this case, a local government, may not deny and shall approve any eligible facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station that does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. And then there are some examples of what would be a substantial change. So that being said, are there any questions from the board?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Green, I'd like to ask the scope of the project in terms of, when do you anticipate beginning this work? How long will it take? Because I know that in past projects, the concern of the butters or the neighbors were the duration of the, of the project and, you know, the complaints about the various noise that will be generated by the large equipment that might have to be moved in to...
Man lifts up and...
To place, place the antennas, et cetera. So do you have kind of like a schedule?
Well, we don't have an exact schedule for this, but for, we would expect to probably not take more than a week on the tower work. There could be some more work that's on the ground and integrating it, but, I mean, that's people in a truck that are just playing with equipment on the ground. I mean, I understand about the man lifts and stuff like that. We would expect to, you know, get that completed in fairly short order, once we started it, but it's certainly not a month-long project or anything like that. The antennas, they only weigh 50 pounds. I mean, you just bring them up, take them off. There's some work that we need to do. You know, those mounts up there have been up there for 20 years. They need to be cleaned up out of engineering standards. They'll still be in the same locations, but, and we're using, we're relocating some of the mounts on it, so that certainly would take a little time, but we'll do our best to get it done as quickly as possible. We don't want to be...
Do you have a projected work schedule?
Not yet, because we haven't received our approval yet.
Right.
And we don't have a building permit yet, but it would be sometime in the spring. We're, AT&amp;T is hot to trot to get this done. It's taken a long time to get the engineering review and the approval. The site's behind schedule. We want to get this thing done. And it is, you know, I was asked today, do you think we'll have a building permit by April, I think, 22? No, April 12th, which is 60 days after the application was filed. So, you know, I said, I don't know. We'll see what I can do. I'll talk to the building department. But we're, we're looking to fast-track this, get everything else put together and get it done, but I would think in the spring, late spring, it would, it would start.
Okay, late spring.
I know there have been a number of technical studies attached to the application and submitted subsequent to the, to the filing of the application. And although there's no, no one from the neighborhood immediately here tonight, I know at the, at the matter that we had last year, there was concern expressed about the radio frequency emissions.
Mm-hmm.
And last year, when there was an application pending, we had six antenna. We allowed the application last year, so the other cellular company had six, and you had three. And now AT&amp;T is seeking another three, so that would make a total of 12. I know in one of the technical studies, there is a reference to 12, to 12 radio antennas, so I'm assuming that 12 refers to AT&amp;T's six, if this application is granted, and the six that are there from the other tenant. Is that right? Do you follow me?
See if I have the...
AT&amp;T...
There's going to be, there should be, well, there's going to be 18 antennas at the end of the day. Sprint PCS added three. They're on, we, back 20 years ago, AT&amp;T and Sprint came in at the same time, and they did their special permit together to both go up there. And over time, they've added antennas or reduced antennas, so you'd currently have, at the end of the day now, there'll be six antennas for Sprint, and there'll be 12 antennas for AT&amp;T. So you'd have a total of 18 total. That being said...
How many does AT&amp;T have already?
Nine. AT&amp;T currently has nine.
Okay.
And then they'll move to additional three, carrying new frequencies to 12.
Okay. I hear you.
Okay. And that being said, as far as, we did submit a emissions report that we had done specifically for this. That's something that the Department of Public Health no longer requires. Hasn't required for probably 12 or 15 years for the simple reason of, you would send in a big report, it would basically say that you're like at, you know, .06 percent of the federal standard. There was never a, the document was such, it was worthless. So they said, stop doing it.
It's still going to be well, well below.
Well, it's still well below, yes. And if they go through this, it'll, this power density and maximum permissional exposures, and it's down at the .000001 percent.
Okay.
You know, so, it's .00001 percent, 100 feet from the antenna.
Okay.
That's probably on a plane, and so...
90 feet up, is that what it is?
Yeah.
You said before you were going to be doing some upgrading of the mounting for the antennas. Are you going to be doing other maintenance as well around the antennas?
Uh...
Is it just to bring things up to standard, or is it...
Well, there's additional equipment going up there, so it has to be able to hold it. So you're talking additional weight. And that being, and so, we've had a little bit of a, this is a very unusual site, the fact that Sprint has all the same mounts. Nobody, after, I researched it after 20, I said, look, I think what ended up happening is it just got put in together. They had separate drawings, but then when it just got built, it just got done, and over time, everyone's kind of moved around. So we, we took it all into account, and this is what needs to be done, but you're adding the antennas, there's also remote radio units that go with the antennas. Those need to be next to the antennas. They weigh, you know, approximately 50 to 70 pounds apiece, so you have to make sure that all of that stuff, you know, isn't going to go straight down. So that's why it was, they went through and they said, okay, well, instead of having the mounts here and here, let's keep those, but this one in the middle needs to move over here and like that. So it's all going to keep in the same type of spread. The antennas need to be a little bit farther apart, but you can move them around, like the antenna that was here, you move it over here because, because of interference. You need, some of the antennas need to be at least three feet apart, or they would interfere with each other based on the frequencies that are being used.
The Ashland zoning bylaw, under Section 6.4, deals with wireless communications facilities, both new and requested modifications. And I want to be clear that you're asking us to waive certain requirements as you've set forth in your memorandum dated February 26th.
Yes, primarily because those, I felt that those were for a brand-new facility, not one that's existing.
No, I understand, but just so that we're clear on it, you want us to waive the elevation filing requirement, to waive the design filing requirement, to waive the landscaping plan requirement, and also to request waiver of the noise filing requirement? And those are the waivers that you want us to, to make, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions from anybody? Okay, with that, I will throw the matter open for public comment. So if you would mind just stepping back and...
No problem.
Let the member of the public who is here come forward. Mr. DeSoni, it's always a pleasure to see you.
Good evening, and thank you. Always a pleasure to be found on the zoning board and understanding what's ahead, what's ahead. Two questions. First one, to Assistant Planner Amanda. You mentioned that DPW sewer and all that were notified. Was fire department notified?
To my understanding, they were notified. I don't know if they have to give permission for these kinds of applications. I think it's the purview of DPW to give permission.
It is. Okay. And the, Mr. Chairman, about the town bylaws and all these waivers? And it's, it's a town bylaw that got passed through the boards here, and some zonings were passed by town meetings, including the bylaw. So I want to put that forth, that the town did have a say in some of these codes that is being waived. I have, and I thank you to Amanda for, let me have this, I was going to bring this tonight, to Mr. Green. I have a couple of questions, and if I can go through you, Mr. Chairman...
I would appreciate that, Mark.
Okay. So what's going to hap, what I'm going to be directing is asking you through you, asking him, have him answer back, and then I'll come back with another question after, okay?
Sure.
Now, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green... Now, through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, I have the frequency report in my hand of the antennas and the, the FCC guidelines. Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, what FCC guidelines on this table one and table two are they going through? This bunch of, on the frequency range, and it says underneath the general population control exposure apply in situations in which the general public may be exposed, and in which persons they are exposed as consequence to the employment may not be fully aware, and potential, aware of the potential of exposure and can't exercise control over the exposures. Table two underneath it says occupational control limits applies in situation in which persons are exposed. These are the same thing on the table one, table two. What FCC guidelines on the frequency range table going across left to right, would they be going by? That's the one question, first question.
Mr. Green, did you understand the question?
I do understand the question.
And if you'd be kind enough to respond?
I didn't know if there was more, if you were gonna do it all at once or like-
Well, I think perhaps it'd be, it'd be easier to-
Not a problem.
And you can just stay up at the microphone and share it, Mark.
Sure. No, it's okay. I'll sit back. It's no reason.
Okay.
The tables refer to, I don't have the exact standard for the FCC, but it's FCC/OSHA standards. Primarily, it doesn't apply in this case, but it is a standard, but it applies to rooftop-mounted installations where you would have roofers or HVAC people up on the roof working. And you'd have a building-mounted wireless facility, and those workers would be, you know, three, maybe three, five feet, for instance. They're working on something or they have to, you know, they're in between the antennas and the roof edge doing something. Those standards, that there are standards for that, we solve that by placing barriers around the antennas. So, with signs that say caution. So, the, for, so employee, so when you have the employees, it's basically people other than AT&amp;T. It wouldn't apply here because nobody can get up and stand in front of the antennas. They're ninety feet in the air. And if you can, you're Superman, that's good. But, and then you wouldn't have an issue with it because you're Superman. But the, those are what the standards are referring to.
Okay.
It'd be a ground, it would be a, a building-mounted type of an installation where you could physically get in front of the antennas.
Very good. Mr. DeSoni.
Okay. Continuing on that, through the chairman, back up to Green again. Then why was this attached to all the paperwork that is being sought to get passed here for what you're building, what you're doing on top of the water tower? It is a building, no matter if it's cold water, solid, whatever, but it still has a height, has a roof per se. On the outside oval shape, that's a cover, that's a roof. And the ring around, why is it different in this compared to an actual fiddance and frequency readings? And how can FCC determine if they don't see a different building? That's another question.
That one I honestly didn't follow as well.
Okay.
But we put it in there because that's the, you know, it's about the only thing that truthfully we could put in here that would show anything. Other than that, you're looking at point oh-oh-oh-one, point oh-oh-oh-oh-one percent. You're not even, like I said, we're not even doing it anymore. But the, the two tables, one is for the general population. So, that's if you have a roof deck. Two is for workers, who would, you would have an idea, they would have a better understanding of what was going on up there. So, we put in those two as an example. Your time in front of the antenna as a general population uncontrolled, say, you'd probably have to be, you know, it usually has to be within five feet of the antennas. You can spend thirty minutes in front of them before you would start reaching a limit that is, would go over the FCC and OSHA threshold. That, that's not a hundred percent, that's a, I, I don't know, it's like a one, a two percent. So, that's why those two tables were put in there. Again, they're for, we supplied this because we were told to supply it. But in a, for a practical standpoint, we would never supply this because it, there just isn't anything there. Yes.
Mr. Green, when, when you, when you folks are actually working up there-
Yes.
Are the other carriers still functioning, or do you shut them down?
Um, depends how it operates. It depends how long you're gonna be there. But it wouldn't surprise me if, if Sprint had to do it. However, I don't do the actual construction of it, so I don't get involved in that. But the, you know, if, if we are, if we're doing work, or, here's a better example. If you were gonna repaint that, that tank, we would have to turn the equipment down in different sectors. We would turn it down as it goes around. We do that quite a bit.
Right.
As far as in there actually building it, I would assume so, but I don't know that for sure. I've never dealt with that aspect. However, dealing with roofs that are being, you know, you have roofers up there or an HVAC, or something's going on, they need to change, we absolutely, you know, we'll shut down sectors. We'll have somebody go out and shut them down so they can work, and then we'll put them back up when they're done.
Would you be able to get the answer to that ques, to my question? In other words, when you folks are putting your, making your enhancements to the water tower-
Mm-hmm.
Are the other antennae functioning, or do you have to shut them down? That's the question.
Yeah, I guess I can, yeah, sure.
Thank you. Mr. DeSoni, anything further?
Oh, yeah. That newest one, but does he have to shut, can he shut down the other antennas? Through Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, to Mr. Green, you need their permission first. You can't just go on your own and shut them down just because you're working up there. It's a different company, different sentence, and you can't, and they won't tell you this sentence because they won't know you from a hole in the wall, excuse the pun, but it's the, it's a way of keeping business codes in their company. So, you're talking to a different company. That's, I'll leave it at that. For this, next one, is more, it's on the page six, and, like I said, I'm going through the whole guidelines here, so it's, it's general public. What, through Mr., to Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, what's the, which table are you gonna be using, the general public or occupational? And which one and why? That's, that's this question.
Mr. Green?
One, for the first question, the carriers all work together. We co-locate on things all the time. We, we, we have a, it's not adversarial. If we need something done, particularly when it comes to FCC rules and regulations, it's gonna get done. Secondly, on this, I would deal with general, because there's not gonna be any employees up there, uh, occup, workers. So, let's just deal with general population, which would be anybody on the ground. At approximately ninety down and six over. If you were to stand there, over then you'd be on town property, but you'd have to get yourself off town property, I would think hypothetically, for it really to matter. So, I, I don't know where the, I don't have the angles of where the general population is in relation to this tank on a sightline, but for, for the standards we're using this, let's just use general population.
Okay. Page seven, the calculations results. The paragraph above reads the following charts. So, it's a graphical representation of the calculator ATT contribution power density levels percentage MPE at six feet above ground as horizontal distance from antenna increases. The calculation is taken into account the vertical patterns of antennas and represents the immediate direction of each section estimate within the antenna horizon beam width. The calculation also assumes line of sight antenna, and the result would be lower if measured due to in-building penetration loss. I'm gonna be going by the top graph, power density in the CM tubes. My question, and how much frequency would be sent out? How high, all, all below ground level, above ground horizontal distance, what's the line of feet that you'd be working on?
Mr. Green?
I don't know the line of feet because I don't know where the public's gonna be standing, but this, this gives you a graphical interface of if you were a hundred, two hundred, two hundred and seventy-six point seven-four feet away. It's one point two-nine-seven percent. That's at the absolute peak. And then, and then it goes from there down until you hit, so that's, right, and then it rolls from, it rolls from there. And the one on the top basically is the different frequency bands and how they interact as far, as far as power and peak power.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
Mr. Green, that two hundred and seventy-six feet mark where it's just over one percent, one percent is, well, I guess my question is that one hundred percent line is the FCC max?
Yes. And the scale's just not, it's, the scale's off because otherwise you wouldn't be able to fit it on the screen. That's how they did it. I mean, it goes from, it, it has like, it goes from point oh-oh-one to one through three-quarters of it, then jumps from ten to a hundred to a thousand. Why a thousand, I have no idea, but-
Right.
Okay.
So, one hundred is the allowable FCC, and at the peak of this, we're just over one percent?
Right.
Okay, so we have-
And that would be, and, and, yes, and that would be if you're standing at the exact location with every single, every single antenna going full bore.
The perfect, perfect storm.
It'd be the perfect storm. When that happens, truthfully and actually, I don't know if it ever happens, but-
Two hundred and seventy-six point seven-four feet, one point two-nine percent is the worst case.
Yes.
So, that's ninety-eight point eighty percent-
Correct.
Safe?
Yes. And I would probably think that that is, and again, you'd have to stand there for thirty minutes, but even then, you're not at the, you know, there's the other, the other concept we're not getting, or we're not getting, we're not getting, that we're not talking about, is you need to stay in the same location. Once you leave the field, you've, you go back to zero, you start over.
Okay.
So, that's the-
So, a sunbather at two hundred and-
Right, at two hundred and seventy-six percent who stayed there for thirty minutes would be at one point two percent.
Risk.
Of, of the allowable. You can get up to a hundred, but you're only at one point two.
Right.
So-
So, it's pretty negligible.
It's all, it's, it's always been negligible. It's, frankly, it's why your, it's why your phone doesn't work. We have a, like, you go into a building, it doesn't work. You go in a basement, it doesn't work. It doesn't, it's such low power, it has, the whole system's putting out less power than these lights here. It's just how it is. I mean, it's just, it's, it's different. You know, as they say, a wat, a watt's a watt. Either a watt you can see, light, or a watt coming out of a antenna.
Okay.
And it's all around us.
I understand.
That they've, the-
I just wanted to-
Yeah.
Wrap my head around that, and I appreciate that.
No problem.
I guess we can get on with this.
Okay. I'm closing out here. Thank you, Board Member Ryan, for bringing that. Yeah, sorry about that. And thank you for answering that for him, okay? Now, I have two things left. It's a statement of certification. I certify to the best of my knowledge that the statements contained in this report are true and accurate. The theoretical calculations contain only based on FCC recommended methods which industrial standards, assumptions and formulas and complies with FCC mandated maximum permissional RF exposure requirements. A comprehensive field survey was not performed to the generation of this report. That's one question, right before I finish. If a question arises regarding the calculation here in SAI Group recommends that a comprehensive field survey will be performed to resolve any disputes. Now, through Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, I have the name Second Joshy RF Engineer SAI Group. My question to Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, is he on staff or is he licensed, technically equipped and knowledgeable to SAI certification that goes along with the, was not, the survey was not performed prior to the generations?
The first question, I believe you don't need a license to be an RF engineer. It's not like being a civil engineer or structural engineer. Second of all, a field survey wasn't performed because, you know, these are, they, they are theoretical calculations, but we're dealing, you know, if, if we were dealing with a rooftop and there was a roof deck, then maybe we'd go out and do those calculations, but on a water tank, we would never do actual calculations like that. And that's, I mean, that's why a comprehensive field survey was not performed, not because they didn't want to do it, because theoretically, you know the, you know the power of the antennas, you know how it works. You know what you're gonna get. So, there, there isn't a great need to go and look at an actual for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And through Mr. Chairman, slight comment for me is if it's not performed, then it's not completely hundred percent acknowledged and complete. That's my side comment for that, Mr. Chairman to Mr. Green. Now, very last page, there's, there's an appendix A reference. Who supplied that? The Assistant Planner, or did Mr. Green supply that with his company?
Where are you referring to, Mark?
The page nine, very last page, page nine, the appendix A.
Okay.
That was part of the report that was submitted.
So, they sent it?
Yeah, that was part of it.
Okay. So, through Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Green, I want to ask the question and have it be out there in case people want to look it up. Can you come up and say which ones gave you the most information for this, for this report?
No. Mark, we're not gonna do that.
Oh, I'm not saying for the detail, I'm just saying by title only.
No, no. We, we're gonna deal with the reports that have been filed. There were references attached as an appendix to the report that you've asked questions about, and unless there's other members of the board that want to hear that information, I feel there's no need for us to be given that information. And-
Okay.
I'm gonna rule the question out of order.
Okay. Then through you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see, and I'm, I'm, I don't want to be sounding compatible or something like that. I'm not gonna ask the question, but it's only in a informational form, formidable sort of thing. Which one do you think goes with this report? That's the reason why I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green, we're going a little bit out of order, but a question came to my mind, so I wondered if you might resume the podium. I just wanted to clarify some, a couple of, couple of points. As I understand it from the application, the additional radio antennas will not increase the height or extend outside the dimensions of the water tower and the existing antenna, is that correct?
Correct. They'll be on the same plane. Sorry.
And any other equipment that will be added to the, to the site by the addition of these antennas are going to still stay within the framework of what's already there?
Yes. There's a couple of the, the remote radio units, excuse me, will be mounted below the antennas. They don't go up above.
Right.
Sprint stays up above, we stay where we are. The equipment's there. Sprint- The equipment's there, Sprint, then their remote radio units, AT&T, our remote radio units and the other search arrestors and the like.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Nope?
No.
Okay, well, thank you, and why don't we, as we had done with the prior hearing, why don't we, uh, start a discussion about the, we will not close the hearing in the event that there are any questions that come up during our discussion, but, uh, why don't we start discussing the matter? Stu, thoughts?
Um, well, my thought is it, um, it pertains, this presentation is very similar to the presentation we've had in the past, and we followed the guidelines there, and, um, I don't see anything abnormal or out of bounds on this one, so I would, I personally would be inclined to support the, uh, proposal.
I agree with Stu.
I agree as well, and again, for purposes ultimately of the hearing decision next week, in accordance with, uh, chapter forty-eight, the three full members are required to sit on the hearing decision, or to make the hearing decision, but Rob, you're fully, um, allowed to participate in our discussions. In looking at the, um, decision that we made last year in, in August, the cell company had requested waivers of the same, um, sections of the, uh, section six point four, uh, because they applied to a new installation and not to a modification of an existing one, and I would certainly think we would grant those waivers with this, uh, this. Certainly, Mr. Green has indicated that the application, um, doesn't increase the height of the, um, existing equipment, and nothing is going to extend outside the dimensions of the water tower or the currently existing wireless equipment. And it would seem frankly that, um, there would be no, nothing that would be more detrimental to the, um, to the neighborhood than what presently is there. Are you all in agreement on that?
Correct.
Yep.
At the last hearing, we did, uh, apply, um, several conditions, uh, to the, um, to the special permit, and I would suggest they would be, uh, appropriate, uh, in this instance as well. I'll read them, uh, briefly. The applicant shall comply with any and all relevant, other relevant bylaws. The applicant shall comply with any requirements of the Building Department and the Department of Public Works. The applicant shall supply the Planning Department and the Building Department with a construction schedule, including a contact the on site construction supervisor before any building permits are granted. Hours of work shall be limited to between the hours of seven AM to seven PM, which I believe is the town bylaw. The applicant shall comply with chapter two oh four of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant shall be responsible for any needed police details from this proposed work. The applicant shall make good effort to reduce noise and other impacts to the surrounding neighborhood during construction. And the applicant shall submit to the Planning Department an annual certification by a certified technician that the radio frequency emissions meet federal standards. And those were the, the conditions, uh, that we placed. Any other conditions that anyone, um, thinks would be appropriate?
No, I think we got it covered.
Okay. Then, um, Assistant Town Planner, would you, uh, draft a, uh, hearing decision allowing the, uh, special permit for the non-conforming use, uh, the extension of the non-conforming use? The waivers as we discussed and the conditions as we discussed and have it ready for us at our next hearing on March twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Okay. Now, assuming that, um, and just looking ahead to your, to your time schedule, assuming that the decision is, uh, signed on the twenty-sixth, as I would expect it would be, uh, it will be filed with the town clerk following day.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is a twenty-day period, I believe, be for, for any potential appeal by members of the public. No one here speaking in opposition, would not seem to be anybody, but legally, we have to wait, you have to wait twenty days, uh, which may not get you to April twelfth, but it'll get pretty close to April twelfth. Very good. Anything else on this? If not, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. DeSoni, for your participation in the, uh, hearing and your questions. Mr. Green, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, I was just trying to get organized here and get all these papers out of the way so I can get to the next set of, uh, papers.
All these organized papers.
Yes, I, I was organized before I came here, weren't I? Okay, item number three on the public hearing is we are holding a public hearing to consider and amend the zoning board's filing fee schedule. By way of background, at our last meeting on January eighth, we had a discussion concerning amending the, um, filing fees. And this was all part of a, uh, discussion that the Planning Department, uh, had with the Planning Board and with the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, to update our filing fees and frankly to simplify them so that, uh, an applicant did not have to make, uh, multiple checks, uh, which, uh, at times, uh, created situations where at least when they would come before the ZBA, something may not have been paid for, uh, typically the newspaper publication, uh, before they came here. Uh, we had that discussion, uh, the Planning Board had a discussion. The Planning Board held a public hearing already, and I understand it has, uh, upgraded, updated their, their fees.
Yes.
And we have the, um, application here, uh, not an application, but a, um, schedule to amend the zoning board's filing fee schedule. Shall I read these into the record or do we not need to do that? I know the public won't really know what we're talking about, but, uh.
Um, if you, if you want, I can read the, what the changes are.
Okay, why don't you do that? That would be helpful.
Okay, um, so the, so the top copy that you have are the proposed changes. Um, and then underneath is the, is the draft that we had reviewed before. So, um, essentially, we're taking the, the cost of mailing notices to abutters and the cost of the legal advertisement, um, we're taking that and rolling it into the application fee. So the proposed changes are basically increasing the application fees by one hundred dollars. So a special permit application fee is changing from a hundred and fifty dollars to two hundred and fifty. Modification or c, uh, extension of a special permit, the fee would be, is currently one hundred, that would go to two hundred. A variance, um, the current fee is three hundred, that would go to four hundred. Modification or extension of a variance, three hundred to four hundred. Um, and then administrative appeal of building inspector decision, um, that was one of the questions we had during the discussion, if that involves a mailing, and it does, so, um, that would also increase by one hundred from three hundred as the current fee to four hundred.
And with those, with those increases, there are, uh, two items that applicants presently have to pay that they will no longer have to pay.
Right.
And that's the cost of the legal advertisement, which frequently runs between fifty and seventy-five dollars, and a butter notifications, which is two dollars per butter, to a fifty-dollar maximum. And those will, bills will now be, uh, paid for by the, uh, Planning Department with the, um, additional proceeds from the fee. So basically, it will simplify things, it will simplify things for the Planning Department, and it will simplify things for the applicants.
Yes.
And it's not going to leave the, uh, town exposed to any, uh,
Unexpected costs.
Unexpected fees or costs rather that, uh, were not covered by the fees because the increase appears to be adequate to, uh, cover that. Any questions from anyone on the board?
I assume that any kind of application fee form that people get online will have this explained where this is now included as part of the total cost, so they understand.
Yeah, so, so I, I have to, uh, update a lot of the applications that are floating out, around the internet, but yes, so this will be updated, um, in short order if it's approved.
Very good. Any other questions?
Nope.
If not, is there any public comment? Okay, Mr. DeSoni is signaling safe, so we're all set. Uh, then I think we do need a formal vote on this.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion, and on this instance, all four of us can vote because this is not covered under section forty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
So your first formal vote as a member of the zoning board of appeals. Is there a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, revised fees of the Ashland Zoning Board of Appeals fees?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? We are done, four to nothing. Thank you very much. Amanda, thank you for your good work on this.
Mm-hmm.
And moving on to our next item, which is no longer on the public hearing list, but under other business, that's approval of the minutes from January eighth, two thousand and nineteen. Amanda had emailed the individual board members a draft of the minutes, uh, last week. I made, um, three slight, uh, spelling corrections, uh, and sent them to her yesterday. I don't know if there were any other, uh, correct, suggested changes, uh, that were submitted.
No, but I put, I put yours on.
In there, okay.
Yep.
This is nineteen, nineteen?
It should be nineteen, good eye, yeah, nineteen. On the, uh, documents presented, the agenda for January eighth, twenty nineteen. Thanks, Stu.
That's one spelling mistake I did correct.
One oh four, line one oh four.
I see it, that's me, you're absolutely correct. Okay, well, with that, uh, with that amendment to, um, on line one oh four, to making it two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and eighteen, any other questions on the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I don't wanna be really tough on this, but for the present on the top there?
Mm-hmm.
Just my last name.
Oh, is it spelt wrong?
Oh, my goodness.
It was right somewhere else, so.
Oh, wait, two Ts, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay, it's, it won't be the last.
Thank you for correcting that because we at least ought to have our members' names spelled correctly.
We'll get it right.
I always double-check it too, so I'll make sure that's corrected.
With those two, um, corrections, if no others, there a motion to approve the minutes for the January eighth, two thousand and nineteen meeting?
So moved.
Is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. And lastly, staff updates and administrative matters. I don't know if there are any?
No, not that I know of, no.
Um, I, I would simply say that there, there is a, um, an organization that's having some, uh, training out at Holy Cross College on Saturday. Um, I believe our Assistant Town Planner will be there to, uh, participate in that. Um, the town and the Planning Department is, uh, has been kind enough to have some money allocated to, uh, pay for the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals to attend, and, uh, I will be attending several of the sessions.
And, and Rob will too.
And Rob will as well, excellent. Um, and, um, we thank the, uh, the town for that.
Where's Holy College?
Oh, Holy Cross.
Holy Cross in Worcester.
Worcester.
Worcester. Okay, there's nothing else, uh, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.